I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
That would be horrible.
We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Barlow?
Here.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Vice Chair Hassett?
Present.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Patillo?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Morris? And Chairperson Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now have the automated announcement message.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have 17 copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The item with a recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, October the 2nd, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. in this same location with the exception of any continued items. The minutes from the previous meeting are going to be continued to the October meeting. Item number one, Amy Patsy.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 405-54035 from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for nightly cabin rentals in the Canebeds vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Has anyone signed a request to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Martin?
How many cabins are proposed on this project?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Martin, I believe there are currently five cabins on the property. This rezone wouldn't specify a specific number, but they do have to go through the site plan process, and so they'd be limited to what their site could hold by how to accommodate all of the requirements as far as access and stormwater retention and things of that nature.
Thank you. Anyone other commissioner?
Yes. Mike Bradshaw.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Chair Gillette, and commissioners, I have a question. I'm disappointed that the applicant isn't available to answer some of these questions. Sewer and water, what is the status of sewer and water in the area? I know that it's well water and there are septic tanks, I assume. Access improvement, are they planning to improve this access? I know this road, I actually pulled someone out of the sand pit on this road two weeks ago. So how do they plan to access and provide access to these cabins? Third, is this a private access, a public access? Who maintains this access? There's multiple properties along this, so I'm concerned at that level. And then last, but certainly not least, is fire and life safety. How does the fire EMS people get there if it's not maintained? If it's... And I know that there's no cell service or phone service out there, so how are these EMS services contacted? These are some of my concerns in these areas.
Is there someone from the staff who would like to answer those questions?
Chairman Gillette, and Commissioner Bradshaw, I'll try and answer all of those. So as far as sewer and water, yeah, the property would be on a well and it would be septic services on-site. As for access, that is something that will be reviewed through the site plan process. They'll have to provide some sort of traffic statement that's going to specify the amount of trips that are generated by this use, and then that will in turn determine any improvements that would be required. I believe currently the access to the site is private, and it would likely continue to be that way through easements and things. There's not a lot of dedicated roads in this area, so that would not be typical to require dedication. But they would have to show that legal access and they would have to show that there's sufficient access for the site and for the proposed use.
Thank you.
As for the fire district, it's currently in the Colorado City Fire District. We do send our site plans to the fire districts, and then also they would be the ones that would review for when it comes time for building permits.
Thank you. Commissioner Hubbard?
I have to agree, if this is important to the person, then they should be here and answer all these questions. We're hearing a lot of he said, she said kind of thing, we don't know what they're going to do. I'm not in favor of... They proposed all this thing, they want to change things for the community, why aren't they here? Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Patillo?
You said there were about five cabins on the site right now?
That is correct.
What are they doing for wastewater and sewer?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, it would be through septic, I don't know if that's...
I mean, do they have one now?
I would have to check the permitting history on that.
Because I looked at it, it's 2.98 acres, they've got five cabins on there, they're really pushing it.
Yeah, and that would be something that we would...
As far as constructability with required setbacks because they're on wells and everything else for that many structures.
I'm looking at this, and it says they want to change the zone to allow for nightly cabin rentals. It sounds almost like they're not renting the cabins now, and they want this zone changed so that they can rent their cabins?
Chairman Gillette, these one and two are properties that we've been in discussion with both the county attorney's office and development services with. This is to bring them into compliance with the zoning code. They jump-started the process, and so we cited them for noncompliance, and so this is to bring them into compliance with it. As far as we know in their conversations with them, after we spoke with them and told them about the options, the legal options that the county attorney's office has, they decided they stopped advertising, stopped renting, and allowed the zoning process and building process to go forward.
So is your understanding that they're not asking to build more, they're just trying to become compliant with what the law is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
If I may just speak to it a little bit as well, we did... So these properties were brought to our attention some time ago, they've been under violation. We did, there was, so one and two, but there was another, a third one that came in for their rezone, I want to say it was last year sometime, maybe a little over six months ago, and did receive their rezone. They're in the process of getting their site plan and getting their building permits. These two were brought to our attention as well, and so they're going through that same process.
Commissioner Alexander?
It's just a point of clarification from the staff. All the concerns that have been brought up in regards to this, the roads and the septic and the water and so forth, all of that will be addressed in the site plan if I'm correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Alexander, that is correct. So the site plan will address all of our requirements as a county, and they would need to meet all of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Madam Chair, we need to close the public hearing?
I did close it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For once, I did. Okay, I have a motion to deny with a second. All in favor of denying this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
So aye and nay, which one?
Aye means you agree to deny, nay...
Thank you. Commissioner Hassett?
Nay.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Patillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Nay.
Commissioner Morris?
Don't think he's on the teams right now.
So Chairperson Gillette?
Nay.
So the motion passed, five to four.
Okay.
Thirty mile.
Thank you. I will move on to item number two, Alex Bowlen.
Item two is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 405-54040 from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for nightly cabin rentals and a music studio in the Canebeds vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, has anybody signed up to speak on this item that we don't have? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Chairperson Gillette, he indicated that he would be on teams, but he is not in the meeting room at this time.
Well, apparently this is the same thing as item number one, and what they're asking for is to become in compliance.
I have a comment.
Certainly.
So does that mean people should just go against rules and regulations and do what they want, and then come here and it's like ask for mercy?
Beg for forgiveness.
Yes, beg for forgiveness.
No, I don't think that's what it means.
It just seems that that's the pattern here.
That's it. Staff, want to give me a little help here?
Madam Chair, on this, so because they have a number of options, really it goes down two roads. The county could proceed with legal action against them for zoning violations, and the court could order them to... The number of options up to me would be compel them to do exactly what they're doing now, and then they would come here and do what they need to do to come into compliance, that's option two, which since it's, since it is as it is already completed, would be to have them abate the property, start from zero, build everything back up, following as if it were vacant land, remove all of the cabins that they have, and then bring it back, which would be extraordinary cost to them and to the government. And then, so that's that option. Option two would be to do what they're doing now, met with them, we sent them a cease and desist letter, and that's kind of got the wheels rolling on this, and so right now they're pursuing option two, which is to come here and request to bring it into compliance. The other option would be litigation. This is to avoid litigation.
So a question for staff, so I'm just going to lump one and two together. Have the property owners pulled permits for the cabins that they have on-site?
They can't pull permits yet until they have the rezone and the site plan. So they've spoken with building, building can't issue the building permits yet until the site plan's complete, and the site plan can't be completed until the rezone is done.
What is the staff's recommendation on this?
Madam Chair, commissioners, staff's recommending approval. As far as our zoning ordinance is concerned, the CRE zone is, that's what the CRE zone is meant for, is to provide for these type of opportunities or these type of recreational areas throughout the county. We're recommending approval because they can meet all of the requirements within our zoning ordinance, and they can meet all the requirements within the site plan. But again, that's our staff's recommendation, we're looking at the general plan, the zoning ordinance, do they meet those requirements? Yes, they can meet those requirements if they continue to proceed. The first step is the zoning, the rezone. The Commission can still take into account the area, comments from the public, and other things, so that you guys don't have to go with our recommendation, but we are recommending approval because it does meet our requirements and can meet our requirements.
Thank you. And it brings them into compliance, so, all right.
Chair Gillette?
Yes.
So my concern with these is, again, the noncompliance issue, and this area being kind of wildcat, doing as-is, whereas ignoring statutes and neighbors. I appreciate the staff going out and working with these folks and making sure that they're into compliance, but the challenge is, is how do we stop this? How do we not allow this and continue this trend of coming to ask for forgiveness? And so that's my concern here at one level. The other concern is, you know, if they would have brought this to us and prior to them having cabins there, what would we have said? We would have asked them for fire life safety plan, sewer water plan, does it meet requirements? Now we're just playing catch-up, saying we hope it meets, we want it to meet, but doesn't. And so that, to me, is frustrating, and this is... My biggest concern is how do we can stop this demerold process?
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. How long have these cabins been there?
Madam Chair, commissioners, I know we've been in the process with our violation, I believe on this one for probably, I think, a year now, at least on this one. So I'm not exactly sure when those cabins were placed there, we can probably do some more research and find that out. I just wanted to also clarify that even if the rezone passes and we move forward to the next step of the site plan, if they're not able to meet the requirements as far as septic or access or whatever requirements maybe the fire department might have or our building code, then they're not going to be able to continue to move forward with the process. This is just the first step, get the rezone, they will have to meet all of the requirements regardless, even though that they already are existing and there, they put them in, they still have to meet the requirements, and if they don't, then it would stop there, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Have another question.
Commissioner Martin?
Apparently this is not so important to them, that they're not present or available.
I do believe that's a mistake on their part. Is the applicant here now by any chance?
No, they have still not logged in.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Certainly.
Okay, clearly the issue is that they're not here, we don't know what happened to them, they could have internet failure, they could be in the hospital. Can we just continue both of these to next month, even though you already denied one? Can we go backwards?
We already did one.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Hassett, we can do a motion, have to do a motion for reconsideration brought by a member of the prevailing side to bring the next number one back. I'll walk you through that process if someone wants to do it, if that comes up.
I mean, I think a lot of the questions would be better answered with the applicant here, and unfortunately they're not, we don't know why, but I think that they've made a significant investment based on the photos that have been presented, and who knows, this could get denied down the line, they might, as Mr. Hultrey had stated, this might not even pass your guys' next phase. So I think it'd be better if they were here and at least afford them the opportunity to do so.
I would be willing to reconsider my previous vote under those circumstances.
So we would have two motions, the first one would be to continue item two, and then there would be a second motion brought by Commissioner Patillo, I'm assuming to bring back item one for reconsideration. Once it's brought back, there would then be a third vote to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay. So, yes, I am...
I make a motion to continue item number two to the next October meeting.
Okay, and second by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we need to have a count. I believe the ayes have it. Yes.
Members of the Commission, I recommend, especially since some of us are on teams and there's a delay, that if you're voting against an item, to say nay, that way we can clear the delineate which side you're on. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to say that the vote was to approve. And then we need another motion, Commissioner Hassett or Patillo, that'll be fine, to bring back the other one.
I move to reconsider item number one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, I have a vote, a motion and a second, and now we're going to vote. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that means that this one is approved, and we will now take up both items with the intention of...
We need to continue number one.
Number two is continued to the next meeting, so we just voted to reconsider item one, which brings it back, and so now this would be a motion to continue item one to the October...
I make a motion to continue item number one to the October meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to continue item number one and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. So item number one and item number two are now moved to the next meeting?
October 11th.
October 11th.
October 11th, okay. Item number three, Alex Bowlen.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 402-33116 from an AR agricultural residential zone to an RE 30M residential recreation 30,000 square foot minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the Littlefield vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, is the applicant here? And I have no requests to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commissioners have anything to ask?
Yeah, what makes this property out of compliance?
Commissioner Patillo?
Oh, sorry. Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, so the AR zone has a one acre minimum lot size. The property as it sits in gross acreage is just over one acre, however, there are ingress and egress easements on the northeast and south side of the property, which you have to subtract from the lot size, and so the net acreage falls too small for that AR zoning. The applicant did try to get those easements abandoned, however, the surrounding property owners did not want that to happen, and so they went through the rezone process instead.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion?
I move to approve item number three.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Aye.
Was that an oppose or an aye?
That was in favor.
Thank you. This motion has passed. Item number four, Peggy Clemens.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 225-16006 from an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to a CEMO, commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone, to allow for expansion of an existing storage facility in the Mojave Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? I'll close the public hearing, does any commissioner have any questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number four with staff recommendations.
Second motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number five, Amy Patsy.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 36460EFGHJ from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone to bring the parcel into compliance in the Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, is the applicant here and do you wish to speak?
I'm your applicant.
Please come to the podium. Please come to the podium. You can speak or just hear questions?
I, I was, received a letter to come here and answer any questions or address any problems.
Any Commissioners have any questions of this applicant? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item five with staff recommendations.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Hasset, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number six, Peggy Clements.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a rezone for assessor's parcel number 30627012 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 15A agricultural residential 15 acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. There are two letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant, I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Just questions or do you want to talk? Just questions. Um, okay. I do have one person who wants to speak on this item. Sheila Owens, maybe? Please tell us your name and your address.
Uh, yes, hello, good afternoon. My name is Sheila Devlin, and I reside at 2282 South Verde Road in Golden Valley.
And what do you have to say?
Um, I just have a few questions about the, um, the rezoning proposition here. Uh, my family and I do live right across the street from, uh, these potential parcels that may be rezoned, and, uh, we just had a few concerns about any, uh, further flooding issues or erosion issues. Uh, with Verde Road, there is a wash that runs parallel with it, and the wash does empty out right at the bottom of the road where it does connect to Shinraum, and, um, and this is a not maintained road, so it's not a county maintained road. There's not many people at the time that really access this road or use this road, really, other than us, a few neighbors and such. Uh, we are concerned with the approval of these five lots, that there may be further erosion to the road itself and also at the bottom of Verde as well. Every time it rains, both sides of the road really start to erode, and, um, with, uh, further building here, this could potentially lead to more erosion. And, uh, also, um, we just have some questions on the access points, um, to these said properties that they're hoping to get rezoned. Um, at the time, there really are no, say, qualified roads that would lead to them, um, other than possibly, uh, making a, an access over this wash to Verde Road. So we just have a few concerns on where these folks would access their said properties and, uh, any erosion or anything like that.
Who fixes the roads now?
Um, well, at the moment, uh, it's not county maintained, so, um, we just purchased the property. It was probably, uh, less than two years ago, we, we moved in and everything. Actually, a year ago, we officially moved in, and, um, right before we moved in, it was the old owner of the land that would fix the roads and such. Um, we are going to be acquiring, uh, the proper equipment to be able to help maintain our road, you know, but, um, again, we are concerned, say, with more traffic on it, more folks on it and such like that.
So when you say "our" road, you mean the road that goes to their property and also the road that goes to your property?
At the moment, there are, uh, the only road that I know of that goes to the property, it's on the, um, there's like a plat map that we got in the mail, and, uh, we ended up taking a drive to try and find where this said road was, and it was called, uh, Santa Maria, and the other one's Tapet's Drive. Uh, both of them are almost inaccessible by a four by four. So our, I guess our concern then would be, how would they obtain access? Would it be something off of Verde Road?
Okay, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman? I have a question. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question for you. Oh, yes. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Are, are you aware that you can petition the county for maintenance of that road?
Um, not quite, no.
Okay, you, you can get ahold of Public Works, and, um, they will guide you through the process of how to get that road maintained, um, and, um, you'd, you're already putting money in to bringing it up to a certain standard, and that's what it requires. So I would suggest that maybe you could look into that, that would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you.
The applicant? Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. I live in Kingman. I just wanted to respond to a few questions that she had. So Verde is, I believe, an existing 100-foot wide easement or right-of-way right now. She's correct in that there is a wash through there. Uh, the access for this would be directly from Verde, and as a result of this approval, there will be a condition to, uh, complete a parcel plat map, and then they will have to create the right-of-way for that back lot. So she brought up the two streets, Santa Maria and Tapet's. That's common in, um, Golden Valley, that there's lots of street names all over, but there's no roads. So this is the same thing, um, where they're going to have to grade a road to get to that, to that back piece, either on Tapet's or the one to the south. So, um, this is a minimal request, uh, the five acre lot, the four, five acre lots match the lots adjacent to this, to the north and to the west, um, so I don't see, um, any, uh, any concerns with this, and I would ask you to approve it if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have a question of the applicant? Commissioner Hubbard?
So you're just looking for a lot split, right?
Yeah, they've got, um.
They're looking for a lot split, are you going to provide any kind of access?
So the access is currently on Verde. There, that is a graded road, and there is right-of-way or easement, um, along there, so that's their legal and physical access.
So the people you represent are going to have to go through, you know, plant checks and all that other kind of thing?
Yeah, condition of approval will be for the parcel plat map, and then, just like the adjacent owner across the street, um, the county does not maintain this road, so they'll have to work jointly, uh, if it gets washed out.
Are they going to, uh, what about drainage, sheet flow, that kind of thing? Are they going to have to take care of that, or that's down the road, right?
Well, everyone has to do it on their own lot. You're not allowed to put extra, um, floodwater on your neighbor's lot, but, um, I think we're talking about in the road, and actually, when I looked at the pictures of the road, I mean, for Golden Valley, it didn't look that bad. Um, there was a clear graded road down, and the wash does go on the side, and the major wash crossing on this road is to the north. I just got the pictures yesterday, so I was looking at it last night. So, um, it connects to Shinraum to the south about 1,200 feet. To the south, Shinraum is a paved access.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a vote, a motion.
I move to approve item six with staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This motion passes. Item number seven, Amy Patsy.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 32605141 from an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 2A agricultural residential two acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? I don't see the applicant, um, and I don't have a request to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Do the Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item seven with staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So moved. I have item number eight, and the applicant is asking for this item to be continued, and so I am asking for a motion to continue this item to October the 11th.
I move to continue item eight to October the 11th.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Hasset. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number nine, the applicant is asking for the item to be continued, um, to October the 11th. Um, I would entertain a motion.
Move to continue item nine to October 11th.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Hasset. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And item number 10, I'm going to move, uh, on the agenda to after item number 15. So we remove to item number 11. Peggy Clements.
Item 11 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 31370038 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Hackberry vicinity. There is one letter in opposition. Staff recommends approval with standard condition.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, and I do have, wait, is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Please come to the podium, give us your name and your address.
Jonathan Carlton, 2110 Seneca, Kingman. Um, really, I'm just here to, uh, address the comment in opposition or answer any questions, so, um, the comment was a concern about additional wells being drilled in the area. There is an existing well on this property, and the intent of the division is for that well to be used as a shared well.
Thank you.
No additional wells at this point are planned to be drilled, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this applicant? You may be seated, sir. Um, I do have one person, her name is Linda Douglas.
I'm the owner, and I'm just here for questions that, uh, that John cannot answer.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing and, um, and ask for a motion.
To approve. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Hasset. All in favor say aye.
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 That motion is approved. Item number 12, Amy Patsy.
Item number 12 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 31435036 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the Valentine vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve with staff recommendations, item number 12.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Hasset. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number 13, Peggy Clements.
Item 13 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 33203001C from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? I have no requests to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, any Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve item 13 with staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, um, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 14, staff report, Alex Bowlin.
Item 14 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 33329065B from an AR 14A agricultural residential 14 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 11A agricultural residential 11 acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a lot line adjustment in the Valley Vista vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask, is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Thank you. Hearing none, um, Commissioners have any questions of this applicant? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a vote.
Move to approve item 14 with staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Patillo. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number 15, Peggy Clements.
Item 15 is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel number 33329086E to allow for a wine tasting room and wine stalls in an AR 12A agricultural residential 12 acre minimum lot size zone in the Val Vista vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask, is the applicant here and do you wish to speak?
I don't need to speak, but I'll have to answer.
Thank you, sir. Does the, any Commissioner have a question of this applicant? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Move to approve item 15 with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
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 So moved. We will now go to item 10, Amy Patsy.
Item 10 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel numbers 33225145146174 and 237, 33231001002 and 005 through 010, 33232002 through 013, 33233002 and 010 through 013, 33234006, 009, 012 through 017, 33235005 through 012, 33236011 through 016, 33237002 through 004 and 007 through 017, 33501003, 158, 163 and 164, 33525005007 through 009 and 011 through 014, 33527002 through 016, 34401030, 065, 069 through 072, 344021, sorry, 34402013, 34419004005, 006A, 006B, 006C, 007 through 012, 014 through 016. 344-19004, 005, 006A, 006B, 006C, 007 through 012, 014 through 017, 023, 024, 029 and 030, 344-21005 and 006, 344-23002, 004 and 006, to apply the ES Energy Solar Overlay Zone to an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a solar facility and assessor's parcel numbers 332-36010 and 017 and 332-37005 and 006 to apply an EO Energy Other Overlay Zone to an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for clean liquid hydrogen production in the Red Lake vicinity. Staff has received 25 letters of opposition and one letter of support by the deadline yesterday and a number of emails have come in after that. They have been added to your packets for review. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Good job, thank you. Stop that! Stop it immediately or you will be removed from this building! You don't even understand what's going on! No you don't! She just read all those numbers! And I said she did a good job, she did!
Audience will be in order.
Nothing to do with this at all. It only has to do with the fact that she read the numbers well. You guys are- Order! You will all be, you will all be removed, I'm telling you, so be quiet! Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present. And I expect all of you to act like ladies and gentlemen. Come forward, please.
Good morning, Chair Gillette, Commissioners. My name is Derek Fromm. Scottsdale, we've met before many times. It looks like this is a popular topic for today. Thank you for the opportunity to present the project. I'm doing so on behalf of a member of your community, the Wallopai Farm. It's a longtime member of the community, an employer, large employer, a ongoing buyer of goods and services in the community, and a taxpayer. And in a nutshell, this is a, what I would call a sui generis, unique situation because it's all about distributed generation and the ability of a commercial residential property owner to generate energy on its own land where the project or the parcel is not able to connect to the existing grid. And clearly, just as we all need food and water, we also need power. So that's the premise of this particular case, which is different from other situations. Before I go into details and I send you a large pack of data, because I think what's the biggest confusion here is that we're all dealing with an echo chamber of opinions. And what we really need to have a proper discussion and dialogue about this project is we need facts. So I tried to present to you in a paper form, ever deeper, go into the weeds of facts and data, because that's the best foundation for what you need for approval and what the community needs to understand what this is all about. So in a nutshell, again, this farm needs power to operate. It doesn't have power, it's running multiple 24/7 diesel generators on its property, which is exactly the opposite of what it should be doing if it had access to power. Secondly, they are very much mindful of sustainability and resource stewardship and particularly as it pertains to water, because that's their lifeblood, if you will, because they are producing food that people eat. So not only do they care about water, but they care about the absence of anything that might taint their product, which is growing food. So the project will help the farm in two ways. It'll generate power onsite, for 100% for use onsite. It will not be connected to the grid or sold to third parties, not only because that's not the objective, but also there aren't any power lines even remotely accessible to them. So this is purely a distributed generation, as the term is defined by the Arizona law and even your own general plan. Secondly, they are very much mindful of reducing their water usage footprint. And as a result, we discussed, and I'm assisting them in that, how can they grow crops that have a lower water requirement than what they're doing today on their entire parcel? And we came up with a product, if you will, to grow green hydrogen by using onsite solar power, as we just discussed, so that during the day, the solar power energizes the farm and the hydrogen produced from using their water and additional solar power generates hydrogen which effectively can be reversed at night so that the hydrogen turns back into water vapor and energy. So what is important is we reach out to the community. I think I'm putting here a map, can I please have it? I'm not sure if you can see it. And is there any chance to blow up the map portion if somebody's operating the camera? So we made an amendment to our original application in the sense that we spoke with members of the community and we decided to self-impose a 300-foot setback around the entire perimeter. In addition, one particular neighbor, if you will, had an issue with a 40-acre parcel nearby. And I've confirmed, and we do this on the record here, that we are completely removing that parcel from any rezon so that that community that's in that area to the east of Stockton Hills Road does not get affected by the project.
So this is- Excuse me, could you point to that, the acres that you're talking about?
Sure. This is the parcel, it's 344-02013. And actually, the neighbors go back quite a while, because in 2015, they had an issue with the then-farm owner kicking up a lot of dust. And I thought, when we met with them, I thought this would give them a happy ending of that saga by removing it and potentially even let them have that parcel.
Thank you.
So we tried to mitigate this issue, but so what it means is, for purposes of the current Phase 1, we've removed everything effectively to the west of Stockton Hills Road. The red line is the 300-foot buffer zone. We try to show the mountains that also serve, of course, to block as a view obstruction, a very ancient impediment. So that's what we're looking at right now. And you may ask, why do we need all that land? And what the, and I'll go into a little bit the detail, I'm aware of the timing. The detail is that the, this is a strategic redirection of the farm whereby, following this parcel, over time, they may want to reduce their current farming on a section and instead farm solar energy. And what I will show you and what you have in your pack is that if you take all of the water, according to the USDA Arizona statistics, the entire water usage of a pivot irrigated section, which is effectively four pivots on 512 acres out of 640, that uses between 2,000 to 2,400 acre feet per year. Whereas if we stop irrigating for farming, we use that same section for a solar farm, we then use the power to energize the hydrogen in a small shadnail, let you know what hydrogen is. The total annual water usage goes down to 240 acre feet, meaning we can reduce the water usage by 90% by growing green hydrogen. And that is an aspect that's often overlooked because people trade opinions and not data and the water usage of hydrogen production from effectively water splitting. The electricity is used to split the water molecule and kick the hydrogen left and the oxygen right, and then you capture the hydrogen. And when you reverse it, you take that hydrogen and you use it in a fuel cell, you end up with energy and water vapor. That's why you can use it in trucks, you can use it at other times when the sun doesn't shine. So it gives the farm its 24-hour energy that it needs to operate, as is its right to-
Can you bring this to a close?
Yes, I can. The other aspect is, a lot of people say keep Mojave beautiful. We have looked at the general plan and in great detail, and under the current law, the, there are no designated scenic roads or vistas on Stockton Hills Road. And therefore, the application under current law does not affect that part of the process. The other point is, both the solar and the hydrogen production will not only help the farm continue and expand its employmentship, employees, the electrolysis will, the hydrogen production will increase jobs. The current, the current property tax generated by the parcel you see here are $17,000 a year. If we, if we build the solar and the hydrogen plant to a cost of about half a billion dollars. The annual property tax, which we calculated already last year-
We are not interested in the property tax.
I'm just saying, I'm just stating-
Oh, no!
I'm just stating the number, that the annual amount would be about 760,000 and 6 million over the property-
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
What you have here is a solar farm, is that correct? So when you keep saying farm, you're talking about a solar farm.
I'm talking about a solar farm on this parcel that generates power for the farm on whose land we are located and for whom this energy is dedicated.
So what you're saying is that there is a farm that grows vegetables or-
Correct.
Wait, wait.
We have members of the farm here.
But the electricity that you're going to generate from this farm, this solar farm, is going to only be used by you, is that correct?
It's only going to be used by the farm, the traditional farm that grows produce.
So we will get no benefit at all from the electricity to Mojave County?
There are, there are no power lines.
Audience, do not speak until you are allowed to speak. This is important.
Ma'am, the farm is at a great distance from the nearest power lines, even the local ones from MEC or Unisource, at least 20 miles in one case and 14 miles in the other. And as a result, the farm has no access to any power grid. And that's exactly what the general plan is trying to cause the county to promote, and that is called distributed generation, which means renewable energy onsite for 100% onsite use. That's what we're offering, we're asking permission for.
I've got it. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, sir. How'd you guys select this particular location? Makes it- How did you select this particular site? What makes it advantageous to you and your company?
It's the other way around. The farm reached out to us because they need power. So we received a call, can you help? We need power, we have none, we were running out of options other than more diesel fueling.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes. I'm going to beg a lot of ignorance here on my behalf, but one of my first questions is, Wallopai Valley Farms is the owner of this property. What do they produce and how much do they produce currently?
They are producing, and I think it's in your, in your pack, but they're currently producing, they're growing some trees on some parcels, drip irrigation, and they are growing onions, garlic, some alfalfa.
Excuse me, can you, can you give me like, like a monetary equivalent of what they're actually selling? What, you know, what, what is their income on these vegetables that they're growing? How large of a farm are they?
I am not in a position to give you the answer, but there are some representatives of the farm. I'm not the farmer, and therefore, I will get you an answer, but I'm not the person to, to speak credibly based on facts.
And a second question, with this hydrogen production as a side effect of your solar, is that just for the sole advantage of the farmer himself? Or is that going to be sold outside as also a product of his farms?
As you've heard in the, in the more recent rezon request regarding solar, there's, there are a lot of issues, a lot of concerns by people at large regarding lithium iron for all kinds of reasons, including according to the item 85 in Supervisor Lingefelter's item on July 14th, which included lithium mining in Africa, bad for lithium mining workers. We are growing effectively hydrogen as a crop because the hydrogen, when stored, acts as the alternative to a lithium ion battery so that we can reverse the process and have energy come out when the sun doesn't shine, which is, let's say, 16 hours per day.
So, so cutting to the chase here, basically, they're introducing a new product to sell, being the hydrogen product, not just farming, is that correct?
Not for the time being, because we'll need all of the solar. Right now, we're trying to get it to work for, as a battery storage, so as to energize the farm when the sun doesn't shine until the sun gets up and kickstarts the real-time power from the solar farm. So all of it will be needed, but as you know, the sun, the seasonality even in solar irradiance, and therefore, there will be times where the sun has less power needs. And then we have surplus that we can use, for example, for-
Thank you, I think you answered my question, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Martin?
How long has this farm been in existence and how many employees does it currently have?
I will let the farm representative speak to that, but it's in the range of, this farm was, the title changed from the prior owner, whose name shall not be mentioned here, in 2019. And it's my understanding they have 15 full-time employees and employ about a similar, similar number of full-time contractors.
Thank you. Anyone else, Commissioner? Commissioner Hubbard?
It sounds like the farmer's going to phase out his farm and start using oxygen or hydrogen to sell, is that right?
I don't understand your question.
It sounds to me like the farmer, whoever, is going to phase out his farm in producing product and just start selling hydrogen.
That is not at all the-
The profit.
No.
And you said down the line, this solar farm, they might be trying to hook up with the grid, if they can get the county to put lines in, this, that and the other, and sell it to Unisource?
No. It's not a plan.
Are they, are they aware that if he puts that farm in at Unisource, Unisource is obligated to take it?
That may be the case.
They can't do anything about it, they have to take it.
Well, they can only have to take it if the power price is lower than what their avoided cost is. avoided cost is, number one. Number two, we need to get power lines to their nearest point, which is at least 15 miles, it may not be cost-effective. Number three, their power lines are full, and as a result of that, the Greyhawk 46-megawatt solar power plant that you are familiar with would have been a 70-megawatt power plant if not for the fact that the existing grid cannot handle more power. It's full.
Thank you.
Yeah, but they're, they'll, they're going to try to sell that power to Unisource at a profit, and it doesn't help the people of our community.
I...
No, no! No!
I respectfully disagree with that conclusion.
We have to agree to disagree.
Well, I'd like, if, if you, if you have any facts, then I'd be happy to respond to facts.
I just met with Unisource, and it was quite a discussion we had with them, I did. And if you put that power plant in there, eventually, they're going to put power lines into it because they're obligated to do it by law.
But, but then they cannot take the power, that's what I'm saying. It's like, you can have a Ferrari on the on-ramp of a highway, but if you're at peak hour, you're, you're at standstill. It's full.
Okay, well, I say they can, and you say they can't, so...
Sir, thank you very much. We have a whole bunch of people who want to speak, and Vice Commissioner, Vice Chair Hassett is going to call out the names, and would you please just line up? That way, we won't have the time taken for you to walk from that side of the room all the way over here. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I speak briefly before you call that list?
Did you sign up to speak?
Yes, I did.
Is that your slip?
No, my slip should be from the front desk, Linda Thompson. I signed up this morning, but I'd like to help people objecting to this by just asking you a question first.
All right, come up and tell me who you are and your address.
Good morning, members, and thank you for your service. My name is Linda Thompson. I'm the, part of the seven generations that have lived in Mojave County since the 1800s. And what I'd like today is to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to table this agenda item until the supervisors are able to meet, that are going to review the addition of more solar and other green source energies in Mojave County. Money has been thrown out to the public by the current administration, allowing all of this development to occur. My son recently worked for a hydrogen construction company in Utah, and he says their constructions are, they have so much money and so many plants planned around the country, that these companies who build them are in very much disarray because they cannot find skilled workers. So anyway, I would ask again that the chairman asks the board to table this agenda item until the supervisors have a chance to vote on restricting additional solar into the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the solar or renewable energy moratorium that the board is considering is up for a public hearing on the second board meeting of October. The moratorium does not cover applications already received, so this would still have to be voted on by the commission and still go to the board regardless of the moratorium was adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that being said, Patricia Powers to the podium with, and I apologize if I mess up any names, Chris Rodarte, Gary Deal, and Angela Lund standing behind her.
Give us your name and your address.
Patricia Powers, 2317 East Cactus Run Road in Kingman. Good morning.
Good morning.
As residents of Mojave County since 1995 and a homeowner on Cactus Run, we are loudly voicing our opposition to any Green New Deal, solar hydrogen facility requests, zoning, rezoning request. Our quality of life has been deteriorating for many years here. Our roads are falling apart because of the influx of new people moving to the area. Cactus Run traffic has exploded with the influx because of Bank Street, because Bank Street has never been paved out to our area to give residents a much easier, safer, faster path home from town than the limited access they currently use going the long way around on Cactus Run. And it's gotten dangerous. The speeding out there is terrible. That's, that's their quickest or only option, and we need the county to put Bank Street paving at the top of the list. I know it's a little off subject, but North Stockton Hill Road is already taking a beating. I still work, I'm 68 years old, I still work and I deal with it all the time with the increased traffic demands. What in the world would happen with tons of truck construction traffic back and forth for who knows how long to build this very much rejected idea of a solar hydrogen debacle? One that will not serve the needs of our little town. And we say no to the rezoning request for the sake of our property values, quality of life, and safety for our North Stockton Hill Road area. Take your Green New Deal funds and put them way out in vast areas of the desert, way away from residential areas, and protect the good residents out here.
Thank you.
Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. Laura, what is our timer set for?
Two minutes.
Thank you. Next?
Chris Rodarte.
I'm Chris Rodarte from Kingman.
Your address, please.
3820 North Roosevelt.
Thank you.
Let no one, excuse me, let no one seek his own, but each one the other's well-being, and that's 1 Corinthians 10:24. I am opposed to item 10. Allowing these zoning changes is tantamount to signing the death certificate for Mojave County. Solar farms are eyesores, killing our wildlife and desecrating our land. Destroying our God-given earth for the sake of the globalist Green New Deal is shameful and deadly. When we allow solar facilities to overtake our county, we are selling our souls to the devil. Hydrogen storage while depleting our precious water reserves for the sake of Californians is a suicide mission. Without water, we became a ghost town, an arid, uninhabitable deserted desert. Rezoning in exchange for a few pieces of silver is short-sighted, greed-driven, and downright evil. You on this board live in Mojave County too. Do the right thing, vote no on item 10. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to be here all day if you guys insist on applauding after each speaker. So let's let the speakers speak, and you behave yourselves.
Angel. And then standing behind, Jennifer Esposito, Mervyn Pitchfork Freedom, and Angela Priest.
Name and address, please.
Angel Lund, 4141 North, 4141 North Dragoon Road, Golden Valley, Arizona.
Thank you.
Oh, that, oh, now I can't see it. Okay, we're, we have heard a lot of fallacies here. Hydrogen and solar farms are not farms. Has nothing to do with growing anything. It has to do with putting huge mirrors on barren land that we can't use for any other purpose. I come from a background in toxic waste, nuclear power. I'm a Level A hazmat person, Teamster. And what I have to show you is, let's see if I can put it the right way, just a slight, just one of the research that was produced. This one is 2020, I believe, and it looks at about 150 accidents, all because of hydrogen. There is, it's odorless, it has no color, it is the lightest element, it infiltrates metal, it causes degradation of all of the pipes and linings and everything else it is in. It is extremely dangerous. You're talking about putting a hydrogen bomb next to communities. I heard the gentleman happened to mention that he was putting a border around so that there wouldn't be a problem if something happened. Oh, 540 acres, this is in relationship to like...
Time is up.
210 tons of dynamite.
Thank you.
Jennifer Esposito.
Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District 4, County Supervisor, 3211, East Navalley Avenue, Kingman. The hydrogen solar project that Derek Fromm is representing was sold from Red Lake Ventures LLC, which shows Jim Rhodes as a member, to Walupi Valley Farms LLC, which was created in 2019 by Aldara ACX Incorporated and Behrings LLC. According to their own websites, give me a second, hang on, oops, excuse me, fat fingers on my phone. According to Aldara, they are the leading exporter of alfalfa hay and forage and roughage products from the US to China, Japan, South Korea, and the United Arab Emirates and other Asian countries. According to Behrings LLC's website, they are a $351 billion global investment manager with investment professionals based in North America, Europe, and Asia-Pacific. Now, what we have to understand here is that this isn't really green. If these people were serious about generating their own energy, they knew what the zoning was, they knew that they had no power when they started it. I'm a problem solver. Okay, here's how they fix their problem. Grow some hemp, it's a low-water-consuming crop, and then they can do biodiesel and run their diesel generators. But rights end where your neighbor's rights begin, and this is an extremely water-intensive endeavor. In order to make the salt caverns to store the hydrogen, you have to use an extreme amount of water to, to basically drill those caverns out. And what happens is, one acre foot of water is equal to the amount of water used in one year for three high-density residential homes. So we're talking about, they have, the, all combined, the commercial farms north of Kingman have 77,000 acres. They're not farming anywhere near that. We have an irrigation non-expansion area which is currently in litigation with ADWR, and they're basically trying to use their land to farm something other than the crops that they knew when they bought the land, and they should be stuck with what they purchased. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mervyn Pitchfork Freedom.
Hi, my name's Mervyn Pitchfork Freedom, candidate Mojave County Supervisors, I have one, board members, staff. Let's go somewhere where it's cool real quick, Alaska, nice and cool up there. Each person in Alaska gets a check for $3,200 for the oil that's pumped out of Alaska. It seems like Mojave County is turning into a battery for Southern California. I think that the, the planning and zoning and maybe the, the Board of Supervisors, if there's a way that they can put a tax on this energy that's generated in our counties, maybe each and every person here can get a check on this power that's being developed instead of it all being sent out and we get stuck with nothing. We've got this big wind farm out by White Hills, and guess how much they give to our county for roads and stuff like that? Zero. We get nothing from that facility, so that's got to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, second row, are you, no, no, you're good, thank you. Are you Mr. Deal?
Yes.
Okay, come on back up, I didn't see you standing there originally.
Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff...
Name and address, please.
What's up?
Name and address.
My name is Gary Dial. My address is 12970 North Stockton Hill Road.
Thank you.
I'm here today to ask for all of us to work together and avoid all the misinformation that seems to be rampant. I've been on this project since 2013. I have a strong background in power as well as drilling, and offer all of the research and all of the resources that we have to date on the project to you folks, as well as the Board of Supervisors, and would look forward to having those meetings. When I first came to the project, Gary Watson was the supervisor that dealt with the land where the farm is present, and we did have a good relationship and good conversations. And I would like to see us continue that and even expand on that. We are not bad people, we are well-versed in the utilities present, Bruce. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars doing feasibility and facility studies with Unisource Energy, as well as Tucson Electric and Power, as well as Mojave Electric Co-op. All of those options are currently still on the table. They are large-dollar expenditures to the tune of $55 million for 20 megawatts of energy starting from the Hilltop Substation that feeds all of Kingman out to our property on the east side. I can't possibly begin to explain anything in two minutes. My number is on the signup sheet. I have a staff of professionals. We are not here to hurt the Mojave County as we know it today or do any harm to anybody. Thank you.
I have a question.
Where do you live?
Wait.
I actually, my home base is in La Paz County, Windon, Arizona. I own property at Avacu Springs, I own business in La Paz County, I own a residence in Val Vista, right next to the farming operation, and also other properties in Val Vista, sir.
Commissioner Martin?
And what is your relationship to this project? Your position?
I am Infrastructure Superintendent, ma'am.
And you've been working on this project, you said, since 2013?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
I have a question.
Sure.
If you've been working on this since 2013...
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we just now seeing you?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
Well, I think it's quite simple. When, why didn't you come to us before, spending all this money and spending all this time?
The only interaction I've really had with Mojave County is building permits at Milepost 23. We built a $1.5 million facility, shop, et cetera. We did a line extension with Unisource, and that was my only interaction with, with the county. I mean, early on, the wastewater treatment plant that sits off of 66, there was some conversation about taking that effluent water and building a pipeline because they were having, they were struggling with their wetlands project and taking it out to the farm, but when we offered to do the engineering on it, the costs were prohibited for Mojave County to be a participant in that. But other than that, I haven't been hiding from anybody, ma'am.
I, I didn't mean to infer that you were hiding. I just meant, why spend all this money when you don't have permission? You, I, you know, are you doing the, do it and then ask for forgiveness later?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Angela Priest, followed by Jeff Esposito, John Crane, and Jessica Grazer.
Name and address, please.
My name is Angela Priest, I live at 3469 North Hope Road, that's in Golden Valley, Arizona. But I believe that this project is affecting all of Mojave County. I am concerned, why did staff, as you read this statement, say that they approved of going ahead with this? Can you clarify that for me? When you read this, number 10, it said staff agreed or staff approved?
Ask you a question again, I'm sorry.
When you read item number 10, you... When you read item number 10, you read that to us, and then at the end it says staff agreed or staff approved?
Staff approval.
Okay. So that says that the staff feels that this is acceptable to go forward with?
It's acceptable to all the rules.
To all of the rules? Because I want to know why the rules are that we would use 18 tons of water just to make one ton of hydrogen when we are already like 34,000 gallons or something low in our aquifers? Why is it that? They say it's only for them, but just like with the local prison, two weeks afterwards, it wasn't just minimum security. They came in and got a reversal, and it got to become a moderate or high-security thing just because they asked that it's just for them?
Let me get an answer to your question.
Okay.
Staff?
So Chairman, as you said, staff approval or staff denial has to do entirely with if it meets the zoning laws and if it meets the general plan. As the general plan is currently written, that is how it is. The general plan is up for review very soon, and future projects could be recommended for denial because it doesn't meet the general plan. The general plan can only be changed ever so often, about every 10 years.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes. But if it does follow the rules, it's okay for us to put this project in that that lady says is like a hydrogen bomb?
Ma'am, this is the first step. There are many, many more steps to go.
I think we need to stop this right now. We don't need any more steps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, 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 no, no, no.
Jeff Esposito.
Madam Chair.
Behave.
Madam Chair.
Hold on.
Madam Chair.
Oh, she's got to sign.
Madam Chair.
As an addition, the county doesn't have much jurisdiction over water use. It's almost entirely exclusively controlled and controlled by the state.
Thank you.
Jeff Esposito, 3211 Snavely Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. Been here since 1979. Seen way too much progress. A lot of it was detrimental for the sake of money. All right. I could not believe, listening to this dude from the solar hydrogen plant company, the gall, the gall of them saying that they're just going to use it for the farm. It just, I believe in, you know, the golden rule. So I had 20 years of dealing with hydrogen as I retired from Prax Air. I also dealt with other, many, many other gases, and frankly, hydrogen is the energy solution, but not when you're sucking on an aquifer that is not being recharged. These people have got to go away.
No, no, no.
I mean, what a boondoggle, this green energy Bidenomics. Nah, I can't say that. They're carpetbaggers. They're coming in with Biden-printed money, printed money.
Stay on the subject, please.
Okay, the subject is, we've just got to control these people. These people are like the Mulholland stealing water from Owens Valley. Stop this nonsense. You have the power, especially you District Four people who represent me.
Thank you. Jessica Grazer.
Good morning. Jessica Grazer, 1110 South Corizo, Golden Valley. So I just want to, as I'm sure many people here in this room want to oppose this hydrogen project suggestion, it would be detrimental, basically aimed on the aquifer itself. We are running out of water. If this project moves forward, it will be a death sentence for Mojave County and the residents here. And opinions are opinions and facts are facts. So I think that everybody has to really do their research on what this type of project and how to get it going is going to affect the current residents, the landscape, and the water. That is the main issue. A lot of this energy, in my personal opinion, that will be made ultimately, will be going to California. It'll be going to Vegas. We are not going to benefit. We have a ton of farms here that are currently owned by China, Saudi Arabia, that are draining Maricopa County. Surrounding wells are going dry for farmers. They're shipping that alfalfa directly to Saudi Arabia. We are zero benefiting as a country. So we just really need to be aware and really think about something like this before suggesting to move forward. It would be death for all of us here in this area.
Thank you.
John Crane, followed by Shannon Cohen. I don't, Kyle, maybe?
Morning, my name is John Crane, 8853 North Bank Street, Kingman, Arizona. Do you guys have the control to whether this moves forward or not? You're supposed to be representing the people here. If the people are opposed to this, I don't know how many total acres is involved in this that he's trying to pass. Somebody give me how many acres the total is on this?
12,000.
How many?
12,000.
So there's 12,000 acres that needs for solar. I see on the diagram that it's phase one. How many more phases are involved in this? It shouldn't take 12,000 acres to produce enough electricity to run a farm. I mean, they've been running off of diesel. What are they using the diesel for? Pumping water? So I think you guys are making a mistake if you don't stop this now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Shannon Cohen.
Name and address.
My name is Shannon Cohen, and my property is at 2101 Mountain Meadow.
Please speak into the mic.
My name is Shannon Cohen, and my property is at 2101 Mountain Meadow and Stockton Hill Road. And it's directly against what they're going to do. I mean, they're going to put their solar farm right up against my property. So I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to, there's got to be another way. We can't just let this go. So I have a letter that I submitted. I'm not going to read it now because it would take up my time. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, followed by Logan Marsh, Terry Olson, and Stanley DeShazo.
Isle Penry, 3880 North Stockton Hill Road. I mean, you've got people that have been in all kinds of fields here that comes with this. Lithium-ion batteries, they don't like heat. I work in battery industry. I own a battery company I partner with. We had to get out of lithium because they're exploding, burning down buildings. On top of hydrogen, sounds like a big grenade getting ready to go off in our neighborhood. Just, I mean, as a former mayor of a city with the same popular population density as Kingman, please listen to your constituents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members. My name is Logan Marsh. I live at 917 South Emery Park, Golden Valley. I'm also a candidate for District Four. I just, I want to talk about a few things here. This is super concerning for our community. I did hear what the representatives from Walupi Valley Farm had to say. I thought it was extremely colorful. It was about as effective as fairy dust. With that said, I mean, have we thought about the national security implications here with storing hydrogen underground? What are they going to do to, aside from selling it, aside from the electricity produced, what are we going to do to keep our desert landscape in one piece and not be a target for, you know, national terrorism? With that being said, I'm 100% opposed to this project. I think that there's just not enough sustainability. I think it would destroy the community that we love so much, and I think that they should take their fairy dust somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Terry Olson.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. My name is Terry Olson. My address is 2930 East Cali Cedral, which is off of mile marker 14 on Stockton Hill Road. I am opposed to this project on a number of levels. I mean, there's obviously a concern, these people knew where they were buying property when they bought this property. They knew what they were putting in when they planted, what they're growing. So the access to power that now, five years or 10 later, is an issue when it was an issue from the very beginning. If they need to provide solar to immediately provide power to their property, they certainly don't need 12,000 to 25,000 acres to do it. To approve what they're asking for sets a precedence for them to move forward with projects without bringing it to the board. Yes, they might have to meet the criteria by going through planning or building permits, but they wouldn't have to come to you again to get approval for what they're doing, and that decision would set a precedence for everything else that would happen in Mojave County. We've got over 13,000 square acres, or million? Hold on, let me check that number. Yeah, 13,000 square miles in this county, and they want to put it smack in the middle of an agricultural zone area, which is already occupied by people who want five-acre, 10-acre, 20-acre parcels. So you're talking about immediate impact to property values, to water rights, to existing power. And my long-term concern is, what happens when this farm fails? What do they do with all this stuff that they're leaving out there? Does it just sit and rot into our environment, into our landscaping? Is there a plan for any kind of removal? If this company moves out, who comes in and cleans up their mess and takes all of these batteries and just the stuff? All of the stuff that would just be sitting there and rotting with no long-term plan? So I would ask you to please consider and vote no. Thank you.
Stanley, followed by Mike Brayley, Wayne DeLong, and Susan McAlpin.
I'm Stanley DeShazo. I live at 10028 North Avenue to Martin, which is not far from this, just south of him. I am completely opposed to this. I believe that this is a first step to facilitate Mr. Volmocil with his hydrogen storage plant that has been presented on television. And I'd like to commend you on your ability to sling BS the way that you do. You mentioned that, sir, you mentioned that the farm wants to put this in at the cost of a half a billion dollars because they can't get power in. You mean to tell me you can't get power over there for less than half a billion dollars? Has there been any risk assessment presented to you people for this project? The other people that have stood up here and spoke to have presented you with some of those things, they have not spoken to what can happen over a long period of time with hydrogen storage in a salt vault. The breaking down of chemicals, the creating of chlorine gas, sodium hydroxide, hydrogen sulfide, not to mention the hydrogen expelled into the air that can become a firebomb. And we live around this. They don't live here. They don't care about that. Mr. Volmocil, in his interview, stated that this is the best one in the United States for storage, but there's 50 to 60 miles of pipeline to California and 50 miles to Vegas to do this.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Brayley.
Time is up.
Sure, if you want to, but I was kind of hoping you wouldn't.
I'd like to ask the Esquires here if I'm allowed to ask the audience anything.
The general audience or?
Everybody here.
Not according to our bylaws.
I can't?
They cannot. They'd have to be a speaker during the public.
I can't ask who's pro and con or whatever.
Not according to our bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Mike Bradley. I live at 2313 Sweet Bush Road, Mojave County, Arizona. Looking at Mr. Fromm's map, his property, or the property that has hired him, I believe, it's not his property, completely encircles us. The only thing that separates us would be a hogback ridge of BLM land that has a bunch of old petroglyphs and an old well and stuff on that, you know? So of course they can't touch that. Hydrogen fuel technology is not available to farms as of this time. There are only prototype tractors with hydrogen fuel cells, very few hydrogen generators that are prototypes that are just now hitting the market. So realistically, you have a solar farm, and if it's a sole use to the farm, they can't use it yet because the technology and the equipment isn't there yet, according to all the research I did as of last night. They knew, just as we knew when we purchased our property, what it was zoned for. We bought our property specifically because it was zoned agricultural, residential, and it had a well to provide us water to farm our sustainable hemp farm, which we farm with drip lines and the like. We have added grapes this year. Now, nobody's going to want to drive by a bunch of solar farms to come visit our little vineyard, so that's going to detract from our property values, the aesthetics. You're on the road going to the Skywalk, how much traffic goes by there daily is phenomenal, and it's going to the Skywalk.
Sir, time is up.
Susan McAlpin.
Hi, my name is Susan McAlpine. My husband Peter and I are 20-year residents of Mojave County, and I'd just like to take a few seconds to point out how contradictory the presentation we received here today was. This is a small organic farm, grows onions, garlic, some trees, but it requires an $800,000 hydrogen plant. It requires several hundred thousand dollars in planning and implementation. So my husband and I, for the environment, for the residents of Mojave County, object to this, and I hope that you will all vote no on this plan. And I would like to use the rest of my time to do as the attorney suggested and ask the audience who oppose this plan to simply raise their hand. Thank you.
Very well played.
Wayne DeLong was supposed to be up there. Is he not here to speak? Nope, okay. Terry Noble, followed by Edward Bloom and Jim Zenzler.
Good morning. Terry Noble, 8020 West Uncar Drive in Golden Valley. So a recent article, well, 2021, April 21, from Forbes, says that the Biden administration is pumping $2.3 trillion of infrastructure proposal, including taxpayer green energy provisions into the billions. But what they don't talk about out of this article is all the failed previous green energy projects. Our tax dollars, Solyndra, $570 million, Abound Solar, $400 million, Kellis Solar, $280 million, Fisker Automotive, $529 million, A123 Systems, $132 million, ABB Inc., $12.6 million. This was just from one article of all of these failed solar energy projects. So where did all of that product go? Also looked up another article regarding solar panels. Yes, they are hot. They generally speaking, solar panels are 36 degrees Fahrenheit warmer than the ambient external air temperature. When solar panels get hot, the operating cell temperature is what increases and reduces the ability to produce and generate the power. Although solar panels use sunlight to produce energy, they do not require heat in any way. Although solar panels use sunlight to produce energy, they do not require heat in any way. In fact, solar panels may run about 10 to 25% less efficient on warm days that are above 90 degrees. We have many of those above 90-degree days. So I oppose this plan and let's keep Mojave County as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Bloom.
Good morning, I'm Edward Blum, 8253 North Bradley Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I was born and raised in Kingman. I lived here most of my life, at least half of my life. I'm here to oppose this project. To me, it doesn't make any common sense whatsoever where they wanna put in 10, 12,000 acres of photocells to produce hydrogen so they can produce power during the evening. It makes no sense to me. Why would anybody wanna do that? What are they gonna do with the hydrogen? You know, transport to California? I think Mojave County in the past years, I'm born and raised here, too much of the Mojave County has been sold off to foreign people, foreign states, and I wanted to say I just totally oppose it and I support the people that, I'm glad the people that showed up here to also, to also oppose this and I hope you do not recommend this to go forward to Board of Supervisors or to not agree with it. Thank you.
Um, sir, regardless of what we do here, this does go before the Board of Supervisors.
I know, I understand that. I don't mean that you do not recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve this. Thank you.
Jim Zinzer, followed by our final four, Robert Smith, Danielle Keck, Martin Runge, and John Tolton.
Uh, good morning. Um, I live at 1527 War Paint Drive, Henderson, Nevada. Um, I just own a 40-acre parcel, uh, which is three miles inland from Stockton Road, uh, right on Buckeye Road. I believe this project directly abuts my property. Um, I appreciate all the comments from everyone. I would just like to go on record saying I would oppose the project due to, um, topics and points would have been brought up by a lot of the residents that live here. Originally bought the property just as an investment property, but may at some point in time, uh, build a house and actually live there. Um, so I'm interested in what happens to this area. I feel the project, uh, uh, would not be in the best interest of most of the residents of Mojave County. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle.
Danielle Keck, 3808 North Stewart Mountain Road, uh, Golden Valley. And I just wanna take my minute to let Terrence Volmocil speak, um, during my time on his interview he gave about three months ago at a hydrogen convention.
Terrence, we're obviously here at World Hydro, North America, Houston. Um, been a lot of interesting discussions over the last few days and storage has come up a number of times. So glad to have the opportunity to talk to you. Can you give us a little bit of background to Phoenix, what it is exactly and what the project is?
Yeah, so Phoenix Hydrogen is a underground storage developer. We develop, uh, hydrogen storage and salt caverns. Um, we're marketing our first project, uh, in northwest Arizona. Uh, we consider it the largest and, uh, best salt resource to store hydrogen, uh, in the west coast of the United States.
Yeah. And what makes a, a, a good storage site for, for, for hydrogen?
Uh, for hydrogen, it comes down to the geology. We have a huge salt body where we're at. It's about 130 square miles or 130 cubic miles of salt. Um, and it's about almost 10,000 feet thick that we can store any number of salt caverns, any amount of hydrogen underground.
Any, any amount? I mean, what sort of numbers of the hydrogen do you, do you store?
So initially, we're looking at storing between 15,000 and 30,000 metric tons in two and four caverns.
Yeah.
But our site has the potential for hundreds of caverns.
Wow.
To serve California in the west.
And, uh, in terms of serving those markets, how far is the salt caverns away from California?
So on a potential pipeline route, we would be about 50 to 60 miles from the California border.
Yeah.
And about 50 miles from Las Vegas.
Excellent. And in terms of the project, uh, development cycle, I know you've obviously talked to a lot of people here. I've seen you've been talking to some of the equity partners and stuff, so I guess you're putting together those financing.
Yeah, we're reaching.
Thank you very much. Robert Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No!
Ah!
Robert Smith, 906 Yucca Street, Bullhead City. I retired to Mojave County after working in the power industry for over 30 years. I'm totally opposed to this project. If you do approve this, you're only gonna set the thing for what's coming in the future. On that right there map, it's just as a part of some of the stuff that's coming up. I have a map at home that is provided by BLM that has 225,000 acres of renewable power in Mojave County alone. This is just the beginning. And working in the power industry, we had to take care of things from cradle to grave. When we had hazardous materials that this will produce lots of and they, we never could, uh, do a line item on a, to be figured out later. The batteries alone, what do we do with these? I know at my house, most batteries only last a couple of years and the ones that are lithium batteries, if they overheat, they explode. I've had it happen with some of my power tools. So what we're doing here is we're setting ourselves up for failure. A solar panel only lasts about 25 years. Then it becomes a hazardous waste. What do we do with it? A battery, five, maybe 10 years. They're really huge. A solar panel or a solar farm will not carry any load unless it has another source. So it has to have either a battery backup or a power line. With that kinda in mind, think about all the, what we're gonna get beyond this. It's gonna require them to have a power line to all of this because it's just the first step of what I showed you here. So then that's gonna be a 200-foot wide right-of-way across how many more properties? Oh, they also talk about in this article about having a railroad line built in. Anyway, I oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin, or are you Martin?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Martin Rungy. I live at 5122 West Rowan Drive in Golden Valley and I also own property, uh, real close to this proposed project. Uh, I'm opposed to the project like everybody else here in attendance today and, uh, I, I don't wanna elaborate on all the reasons. I'll just touch on a couple that haven't been mentioned. One is the, uh, water consumption just for the construction process. Uh, just about all the construction companies I've spoken to say the average is about 4,000 gallons per acre per day of construction. So you multiply that out, um, times 12,000 acres to put in solar farm or a hydrogen plant, uh, you're talking 48 million gallons just for that per day. So that's, uh, something that also needs to be considered in addition to the rest of the, uh, water usage. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, uh, the, using hydrogen as an overnight storage is very inefficient. It takes so much electrical power to generate the hydrogen, to break it down from the water. Uh, it doesn't make sense, uh, from an efficiency standpoint. If they would drop that hydrogen, uh, aspect of it, they could probably condense the number of solar panels, um, by 75% to run their farm as they stay. So, uh, again, I'm opposed and I ask the, uh, Commission that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, John, and then to the gentleman standing behind, did you fill out a card?
I filled out a card here and I sent someone in last week. He asked.
Okay.
Are you still?
Good morning. My name is John Tolton from San Diego. Um, I support this, given what we witnessed, given what we witnessed.
Done. That's what happens when we support.
Okay.
You gotta give your address.
Uh, given what we witnessed earlier, I don't feel comfortable giving my address. I have two small boys at home and.
Give your boss's address then.
Sorry.
Um.
Say again?
Yeah, no, no, no. No interaction with the audience.
Sorry, ma'am. I'm a special operations veteran. I somewhat recently got out of the US military and joined Walapai Valley Farm. This company is actually my first job since getting out of the military, something all veterans know is very important. I'd like to clarify a few things first. This project is three months old. Three months old. The HBF project, the farm, is since 2013. My first project with this company was to find energy for the farm. I started about four or five months ago. We're looking at different options and I contacted Derek, the gentleman who presented, to see if renewable energy would be a good option. This project is three months old. There are no plans for lithium ion batteries. That's why we wanna produce hydrogen. No lithium ion batteries. There's no hydrogen that's gonna be stored in the ground in this project. This project is being confused with other projects in the area. I'm sure that Terrence Volmocil is a great person, um, good intentions. We have no affiliation with him or other projects in the area. It really needs to be made clear that this is a different project for an agricultural farm to provide energy to it. Everybody knows that diesel prices have gone crazy. We can't afford what we initially set out, uh, for the energy to use. It should be expected that if you have a business, you have the right to better it. That you shouldn't be stuck with something forever. That's a fundamental American value. The project to provide energy to our farm will cause change for some people and as humans, our knee-jerk reaction when confronted with change is frequently no.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You got two minutes.
I have a question.
She has a question as well as I do.
So if this project you're saying was three months old, who determined to use the, these particular parcels?
We did.
And for what reason? What, it's cost-effective?
Uh, there, yeah, there's location on our farm. This is all private property. This portion seems like it would be good to provide energy, um, to the farm, to a central location there and then to support the growing of our agricultural crops, which is our main business.
I mean, all these billions, all these numbers that I'm hearing, these are some expensive onions.
I, I think there have been, ma'am, a lot of numbers that have gone around that are, uh, confusing, not related to our project, misinformation, I, a lot of numbers spinning around.
I have a question.
I think that that's a main problem here is that there aren't the right facts and data.
Do you work for this project?
I do, ma'am.
You do?
I work for the farm, the agricultural farm.
Do you own the farm?
I do not own the farm.
You just work for the farm?
I just work for the farm. This is my first job since getting out of the military. I work on strategy. My first project is to get energy to the farm. We're looking at other options, natural gas power stations. This is the most cost-efficient.
Thank you so much, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for your service.
Your time is up.
I have a question.
Oh.
Um, so obviously you work for the farm, not for the developers who are putting in hydrogen. This is your path to supply energy strictly for the farm, just like if I was to put up a windmill or a solar panel or something in my own home, right?
Correct.
Okay, you're, you're looking for energy sources and I'm assuming you have a contingency plan if this gets denied.
I am looking at other options too.
And is the farm?
This is the, sorry, sir, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just saying, this, for multiple reasons, which we're trying to go into, is the best option for the farm as well as the community.
Have you done any kind of town hall or opened yourself up to provide feedback one-on-one outside of a public setting such as this to try to explain to people around you why this is what you feel is the best option?
We, um, we put in the newspaper, we announced a meeting at our farm, um, nobody come to that. I think that it would be a good idea to have another one, to have people at our farm or have a town hall meeting. Um, we, we want to work with the community. We wanna know what people think and feel. We went around and we talked to people. Uh, Derek mentioned that we took out a parcel after talking to the Byingtons who live close to us.
How is the farm currently getting powered? Diesel generators?
Diesel generators.
100% powered by diesel?
Currently, yes. There, there's a small, I, I, I'm just getting into electricity and understanding that. There's a small line that goes to just power the office, but that can't support the farm.
So the wells and everything are diesel-powered, much like you would see in Mojave Valley or something along those lines?
Correct.
So I understand both sides. I understand that business and sustainability and needing to supply power and find the best option possible, but I also understand where a lot of this is coming from, the people that are standing behind you. And I think that it's in your best interest as the representative of the farm to maybe have a civil conversation with these people and explain to them if this doesn't work, that there are other options and, and get feedback from them. I understand that you put it in the paper and I understand that you provided the time to open your office up to them. Um, maybe it wasn't found by them, maybe they just have no interest, but I do definitely see both sides and I would encourage you to possibly pursue that because should this get denied, I'm sure you're gonna be back here with a contingency plan not far off.
Uh, correct.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner. Go ahead.
And what's the, uh, the big difference between your proposal to running on diesel? What's, how much are you gonna save?
In terms of saving what, sir?
And save, and it costs you money to buy diesel.
Yes.
That's where you get your electricity. How much is it gonna cost you to build this million-dollar farm?
We don't know yet the total cost of building it. This is the first step. Like I said, this is a three-month-old project. We have moved very fast so that we could get our application in. Um, we understand other things that are going on in the area and we felt that it was important to get our application in. Diesel right now is costing us about $300 an acre foot. This would be the lowest-cost source for us and, you know, I mentioned other options, but I, I would hard, find it hard to ask a company, a business, um, you know, in the free market, to go for a more expensive option that might not be affordable. We don't know if these other options are gonna work out. This is the best option for our farm's viability.
So how much would it cost between running this farm and running a line in from a Unisource or whoever? How many miles would you have to run juice in?
We're looking at that too and all I can say is that that is very expensive and looks to be more expensive.
Very expensive as compared to putting in a, a plant?
That looks to be more expensive than this will cost us. Yes, sir. This is the most cost-effective option for us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the gentleman's name behind you, but.
Come on up. And, um, no talking in the audience, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Emmett Sturgill. My wife and I own the cattle ranch that is around this proposed project. Um, our ranch encompasses about 170,000 acres. We also have about 1,000 acres of deeded property that's around and in close proximity to, to this project. I was told, and I'm, this is a question that you guys might wanna have answered, but I was told that, uh, the hydrogen plants are not regulated by the Department of Energy yet because the technology is too new. So if that's true, then that, that may be a little bit concerning. My prob, my biggest problem with the project as it's proposed is there's a, um, is our property values and there's a lot of people that bought property out in this area. And when this goes in, that property value is immediately gonna go down. So it's gonna cost all of the property owners in this area a fairly significant amount of money because they're not gonna be able to sell their property. Some of them may not be able to sell it at all if it's, if it's bordering this, this proposal. And, uh, and another thing, I, I don't, I, I would like to say that the people that are here speaking on behalf of this project are not bad people. I hope there's no animosity towards the people. They have a job to do and they're doing their job, but I think it's gonna negatively affect a lot of people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we don't have any more people who have asked to speak on this, on this item, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I wanna say this, no, sir. Um, we all live in Mojave County. We live here and we are affected by the same things that you are affected by. So, having said that, I'm gonna make the motion to deny this project. Stop it.
I second it.
I have a motion by me, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I want to say, Chair.
I'm going to take a five minute break so that you all can leave, and please do so.
I want to thank everybody for showing up. I want to let you know numbers count.
And go to the supervisors' meeting. They're the ones with the real vote. Hey, where did you go?
Well, I just carried out of here right in the beginning. Oh, I caught it.
How do I know in five minutes it's gone by?
Yeah. If it hasn't, you're the chairman.
You've been telling them to shut up all day anyway.
All right, party's about to start, so please take your seat if you're staying.
Leave the auditorium.
You guys are uncontrollable.
I don't have time for all that bullshit.
Evidently not.
Leave the auditorium, humans.
All right, please quietly exit so that we can continue with our meeting.
Or there'll be charges brought.
Okay, we're going to item 16. Revision of Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws.
I vote no.
I'll come up here as it's easier. So...
Is this about the solar plant?
So this is about just updating our bylaws. This really came up after the...
It was at the last meeting?
The last solar issue that came up about what happens in the event of a tie and a motion to deny, and what happens if there's a motion to deny and the motion... If the motion to deny fails under the current laws, it's approved. There is no secondary motion, which is not what everyone thinks, or like their minds work on how something like this would go on. So after that meeting, decided to take a look at the bylaws and motions and procedures and how it works, and made some changes to that to kind of make it flow the way that everyone thinks that it flows and gives us some tools. So rather than going in page by page, I'll just answer any questions that you have, any concerns that you have.
Well, the main thing is that we now have the ability to, if we reject an item, we have the ability to talk about it more, or what it was, was we were even. One side wanted to do it and the other side did not, and then we didn't have the opportunity to vote one way or the other.
Yeah, so there was also that of a tie that came about, and ties are permissible under 11-802, which is the enabling statute for the commission. The statute simply says that whatever the recommendation of the board of the commission be goes to the board of supervisors, and that can include a tie. So what happens in the event of a tie is the chair calls for a second vote, kind of like, are you sure you want to tie this? And if the commission is sure they want to tie it, then it proceeds to the board of supervisors as a tie. And then back to what I initially said of if there was a motion to deny and that motion fails, it then approved it, when that may not be the intent of the commissioner making it, they could have motioned to deny, and then someone else could have wanted to go behind them and say, well, we'll continue this to give the person more time to come back or whatnot. But under the... There were two conflicting parts of the rules, and they did not mesh, and so one said send it forward, and the other said you could still amend it. Those don't work together, so we just... We fixed it, essentially.
Any other questions about the bylaws?
I had a question.
Commissioner Hubbard?
On the word approval, even today, the people were confused about it. The word approval...
That's our next item.
The next item, okay. Sorry about that.
Right. Any other questions about the bylaws? Thank you, sir.
We do need a motion to...
I make a motion to approve the bylaws as presented by staff.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? So moved. So the bylaws are accepted as presented. Now we have item number 17, Staff Recommendations Report. This is because apparently some people were thinking that when the staff recommendation was to approve, that that meant that the staff approved. It does not. So he's going to explain it.
Madam Chair, if I may, and commissioners, to kind of correct that a little bit, when we recommend approval, it does mean that we do approve of the project. It does mean that it meets all of the zoning requirements, all the regulations that we look at. It meets whether or not it's considered spot zoning. We also look at our general plan and the goals and policies that it presents. Doesn't meet that. So when we recommend approval, we are stating as your professional staff that we are recommending approval. Now, again, we are looking at the items objectively. We don't take into consideration the public comment, which you guys do, but we did do what you asked. We went and looked at some of the other jurisdictions and looked at what they are using. I'll let Matt present what the findings were.
Yeah, you guys should have a copy of this in your folder. So we went through the different counties within Arizona to look at what they did for their planning and zoning commission. The wording is a little bit different for each jurisdiction. However, I believe all except for one do give a recommendation of approval or denial, similar to what we have been doing as well. The exception would be Yavapai County, where they say that the conditions of approval being offered should the commission choose to recommend approval rather than giving a recommendation themselves. But all the other jurisdictions did provide that staff recommendation to the commission at the meeting.
I like Apache County's short, sweet...
For those that are pulling it up, that one says consideration and possible recommendation for approval of the rezone.
I actually like exactly what we're doing. It says that the staff has gone over everything, and because of that, they recommend that we approve it. And then that goes to us, who then recommend to the board of supervisors.
But it comes across as they're for it, and even this lady was up here saying staff was for the project, staff's approval. They keep using staff approval. So the public has a perception that the staff is ramrodding stuff through.
May I speak, Chair?
Sure.
I agree with her. The folks hear approval, and that's where it locks in. I know that the staff has already taken care of everything. Everything is ten for, ready to go, and we can either approve it or deny it, but they don't know that. Like you were going to work with the verbiage, I think, is what... Your approval means it has met all the criteria to change the zoning. We need something that lets the public also know that we can deny it if we want to. So approve or deny, maybe? I don't know the verbiage. You guys are the ones that are going to say this, but I can go along if you don't want to change it. That's... I know what you're saying, but they don't. And we have to convey... They come in there and they look at us sitting here, and they say, well, it's already been approved. Those guys up there, they don't care. They're going to go ahead and approve it anyway because it's already been approved. That's the general feeling they're going to have.
It says recommends approval.
Recommend? That's a good idea.
It says that.
Well...
Staff recommends approval.
Yeah, so they figure staff is telling us to recommend it and...
Recommend or deny.
I like Apache County's consideration and possible recommendation.
We have... There are many, many times when we approve with conditions.
Yeah, but did they hear that?
No, correct. But when they hear staff recommends approval, they figure the staff is already signing off on it. They're in favor of...
Well, why wouldn't they? They're the ones that investigate.
Chairman Gillette, if I may, just add a few comments. I definitely understand the concern, and I can see both sides on this. I did want to let the commission know that however once the commission makes a recommendation, that is what is presented to the board of supervisors. So your recommendation...
We understand that.
And so when it's presented to the board for the final decision, the recommendation that comes from this commission is what is posted in their backup and posted on their agenda for a recommendation. So our recommendation, as I've mentioned and has been discussed, we review these items from a planning and zoning standpoint. We look at, does it meet the general plan requirements? Does it meet the zoning ordinance requirements? And is it compatible with the surrounding land uses? And based on those criteria, we then provide a recommendation that yes, it meets that criteria, therefore we recommend approval, or no, it doesn't, so we recommend denial. I definitely can see the confusion, and I think...
We're not confused. The public is confused.
I agree.
But by the same token...
I believe the public could use it in any direction that they'd like to. I think one issue that you might see, one issue that you might see is on those items where we would recommend denial, we would be removing that difference there. On items that meet all of our requirements, we're saying we recommend approval because it meets our requirements. If we take that recommendation out, now that recommendation of denial does not carry the same weight, saying it doesn't meet these requirements.
Well, maybe what we should say is that this item meets all the criteria.
Well, what if we just remove... It's in our report that you guys recommend approval. What if we just remove that from the reading?
Because then we don't know.
I'm sorry. Ma'am, your hand's up, and I appreciate your attempt to assist, but unfortunately you can't. So you can wait and say something to the call to public, but it's going to be after this line item, so there's really no point, but thank you.
Okay, can I... Okay. Apache County, consideration and possible recommendation for approval of the rezone. Approval or denial?
That's what we're here for.
Well, that's what it says. Consideration and possible recommendation for approval of the rezone. At least it's not putting it on staff, like staff is recommending. I would add to that, though. I would add consideration and possible recommendation for approval or denial of rezone.
Well, you can't do that.
I'm sorry. We're doing this... Why are we doing this again? I mean, you guys are doing your job. You're recommending that it's approved. Then we do ours. We listen to the general public. We give our recommendation to the board of supervisors, and then they have the ultimate say. So what is this? Why?
Because we have had the public... You haven't been here a lot of meetings. We have had people at the podium looking at staff like that woman today and saying, well, these people are for it, and these people are, you know...
But they are. They did their job, and their personal opinion, no offense, is not valid in this meeting, and they're recommending the approval based on their duties assigned.
Maybe they should come to more meetings.
Well, I haven't had anybody ask me.
No, we've had it several times at the podium.
And Chairman, ultimately, this is... Staff is happy to present it however the commission would like. Ultimately, this is the commission's decision, and however you guys would like these items presented, we're happy to do so.
I'd like a written note.
I actually like the Apache County one. Short.
Apache County?
Well, the... Yeah. Yeah. What does the Apache say? Read it for me.
It says consideration and possible recommendation for approval of the rezone.
No? Continue.
Go ahead.
Yeah, keep going. You didn't finish.
I didn't?
No, she didn't.
That's Cochise County.
No, it is not. There's Cochise down here.
That's Cochise County.
No, it isn't.
I make a motion to leave it the way it is.
Second?
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to save staff because they get irritated that staff is ramrodding, like you're the ones that are pushing us to...
Hey, I'm going to flip the script. Do you guys care?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to leave it as it is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I think that that passed, so the staff can leave it the way it is. We are now to...
Staff report?
Yes, staff report.
All right, excuse me. Commissioner's comments. Item 18.
We're at item 18, Commissioner's comments.
Yeah, I have one.
Well, I have one, too.
Go ahead.
If somebody recognizes me.
I recognize you.
Oh, you do? Thanks. Well, I just want the commission to be aware that next month, we will have a very heavy schedule. I've cleared the room, the auditorium, until 5:00 p.m. So I just wanted to forewarn you, and Commissioner Kelly, I will require a note from your mother.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the commissioners?
Yes. Items one and two that we pushed off to October... I don't know what the professional terminology is, but pushed off to October. I'm sorry?
Continued.
Continued, thank you. I drew a complete blank. I don't know who's going to relay this to the applicant, but it's in their best interest to be here, I think, for all... this to the applicant, but it's in their best interest to be here. I think for all of us would agree that they've got some questions to answer, so I'm assuming that that'll be done by staff. Perfect.
Madam Chair, we'll reach out to each of the applicants and let them know that, um, the commission would like them, like him here, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other, um, items? Commissioner Hubbard?
Yeah, we got to get you under control.
No, I was just saying, it would be nice if the applicants were here, like we said before, like we did one, a couple, two months ago or something like that. They're in Italy. They care less, you know, what's going on here with the real estate people, whatever, so, that'd be nice if they were here.
Okay, we have now the call to the public. Please state your name and your address.
Danielle Keck, 3808 North Stewart Mountain Road, Golden Valley. Um, I just want to talk about the wording when it does say staff recommends for approval. Lake Havasu, uh, Herald Times, I think, put out an article about the hydrogen solar project, and it said that staff recommends for approval. So people were very questionable, like, how can they already approve this before it's gone to the public hearing, before it's gone through the commission? And a lot of people were contacting me privately, saying, you know, like, that doesn't seem fair. So it does put you guys in a negative light when the community members don't understand it. So I do see both sides, but I do feel like the media is kind of running with that when they hear staff recommends for approval. This was already put out, that staff recommended for approval, and the newspaper had it already. So it's very manipulative to the way people read it.
That's exactly what they're doing, is they're recommending for approval. They're doing the job.
Just as we recommend for approval or denial to the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chair, unfortunately during call to the public, we're not able to respond unless, specifically called out.
Yeah, it's just, um, I, I don't know if maybe the media shouldn't be able to put that out there before it's recommended to you guys, if that makes sense.
Putting anything else out?
Thank you. And I thought it was okay because it's on the agenda.
During call to the public, it's not, if a republic hearing, then yes.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Call to the public. Kathy Tackett Hicks, I wanted to address one item on that. I process projects all over the Southwest. I work in numerous jurisdictions. Right now, I'm in three, four different jurisdictions. Um, I absolutely want staff recommendation of approval when I come before any board. I specifically work with them. I call them. I tell them my problem. I make sure what I'm presenting works. You, I want to know that, and every applicant needs to know that the staff has recommended approval
because that does mean that they've gone through all those necessary steps. And it becomes a, you know, it's a free-for-all when it gets before you guys. I, I recognize that. But the issue then, if people are still concerned, then just tell them that that's what it is. I mean, I appreciated Scott saying, yeah, we do recommend it, because the county is obligated to accept all, you know, requests.
Right.
If they comply with the regulations, they don't get to discriminate. So, but you guys can address and, and include all the other things. So, I'm happy you left it the same. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next month is going to be horrible.
Next month is going to be horrible.
I'll be on vacation, Dad.
Is there any further business to...
Why does he get to take so many vacations and then...
Is there any further business to come before this commission? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
I will need, I will need doctor's notes from all of you.